Daybreak. As folks are aware, the commission did not meet on Tuesday, July 4th. So we're refreshed. Uh, we got a little break too. Uh, our first item on the agenda today is an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the commission. If you would like to do so, please do come to the podium and begin by stating your name and residential address. Uh, we do have a three-minute time limit, which we will keep today. Um, and if I ask you to conclude your remarks, please do so. So under those terms and conditions, is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time? All right.
There we go.
I use my teacher's voice.
Thank you.
Thank you for holding the meeting in the name of potential county groups. Meeting goal is that the turnout to meetings continue. I did have to conserve the minutes, but not to be annoying. The minutes list the 23 people who stated their opposition to solar energy. I don't know if anybody really stated an opposition to solar energy. There may have been a couple. In fact, several speakers mentioned that they have no problem with solar energy, but feel strongly that it shouldn't be an agricultural ban. There was a trustee who spoke up for his constituents, an electrical engineer who explained his concerns with large-scale flow, even though he supports small-filling, fully funded, and the environmental geographer who gave detailed descriptions of the two different water sheds that began right in the middle of the proposed solar development, a farmer who caught our attention with 26,000 gallons of water per acre from the nature of rainfall and the drainage and runoff issues, spoken acres of solar panels, a natural resource specialist who expressed concerns with the impact miles of fencing will have on pipeline, a preschool teacher who spoke about legacy and stewardship as representative of her family's seven generations on the family farm, and how the construction of industrial solar and adjoining fields could be impacted, an engineer who spoke of the devastation of knowing your home when you're surrounded on four sides by solar plazas, and talked about that in due to his ability and property value, a truck driver who seen firsthand the disruption and devastation that construction of these projects bring to the area. I will list the other 15, but please remember, the vast majority of us, this is not about an opposition to solar energy, but about an opposition to an industrial project impacting our rural and agricultural lives. The employee who creates, sweats in his arms and agricultures his own land is the responsible. And as I said, Mr. Fix in the elevator, please come sit in our porches. It's still waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Morning Commissioners, uh, my name is Tony Zyferic. Address is 4376 Route 33 in Payne, Ohio, Paulding County. I used to be a Paulding County Commissioner for 12 years. While there, we developed wind energy in our community. I currently help the Land and Liberty Coalition, which is a nonprofit organization that is concerned with renewables, their need for them for national security, and for property rights. Today, you're going to hear or you have heard from individuals who are either pro or against renewables. That's their constitutional right to give you their opinion. Property ownership is a constitutional right. The freedom to own property and to do with it as you wish is guaranteed in the Constitution. As you don't squash these opinions of individuals who are here to express their viewpoints, I ask you to consider property rights before you move forward with a resolution. You have 158,000 individuals in your community. I don't know how many you've heard from against, but are you 100% positive that they speak for the entire community? When I was a commissioner, I recognized that issue, and I also recognized the position you were in and the fact that it's not easy to choose winners and losers in your community. Just as the considered property race is a very important issue as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being with us. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
My name is Ray Steeman, and it's hard for me to get around this morning because I dropped a trailer hitch on my foot yesterday and hurt just a little bit when I walk. It doesn't hurt when I sit still, but in lieu of what is coming out of Washington and almost every other place that wants to speak up, we're getting a lot of negative results, and it's hurting the people of this country more than any of us can imagine. So with that one thought in mind, I'm thinking about a king of Israel that was surrounded by enemies. He didn't have an army to fight him, and he prayed. That's what this nation needs right now, is the Lord interceding in this country to bring about what we would say would be sense, common sense. And with that thought in mind, I'd like to pray. Lord, as we come before you this morning, we thank you for the privilege of prayer. We know, Lord, that you created us, and you created us for a purpose. Help us to do what we need to do as a nation, but more importantly, individually. Individually, we need to pray. How much time do we spend in prayer? Not enough, because, Lord, you've given that to us. It's a one-way, two-way relationship. You inform us, and we tell you, we praise you for what you're doing, and we want to honor you in all things. Lord, help me to be an example and to do my part. We know that you will do your part, and we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Since I didn't take a lot of my time, I'd like to give part of it to duty.
You haven't seen this for quite a while. It's nice getting away, celebrating 90 years of Ray's birthday and 62 years of marriage too, and 47 and a half years of victory over cancer. First of all, uh, people more likely to get COVID if they've had multiple vaccine doses. It's been proven that the higher the number of vaccines previous, that they, uh, then they higher the risk of COVID. Finally, the FDA, there's J and J COVID shots. They linked to serious blood clots, bleeding, rats, they are reading, and 231 Americans were subjected often on government or corporate mandates to a shot, and that was not freedom there. Uh, next, there's a video that's going to be passed out to you. It's a compilation of Foshee's clips, and, and we dare you to watch it and see what decisions this country has developed as a result of those comments of his. Next, Moderna knew before the COVID crisis began in 217, they knew it needed a way to boost its profits. Yes, fact, and that's not fiction. Uh, Moderna went on to make billions of dollars with the distribution of the COVID-19 thanks to CDC's emergency use clinic. Next is, this says and tells the whole entire scam. Uh, there is a video that Peter McCullough, Dr. Peter McCullough put out. The program is a code, is commended by the FDA and the CDC, he, uh, he mentioned, and Pfizer and FDA knew about 1,223 deaths that occurred within 90 days of Pfizer's mRNA vax rollout. In fact, the lawyer for the FDA wanted to block this information for 55 years. This is prim, well, this is evidence, great evidence, that the FDA is, is involved in the drug safety cover-up. Next, there's a spike in deaths corresponding to COVID. Next, CDC confirms that heart risk soars 13,200%. The risk of myocarditis is 133 times greater. And also, it went on to say that it's criminal. Uh, confidential EU documents reveal thousands of deaths before Pfizer shots. Then the documents dated August the 18th marked confidential, and in here, it's from August 22 to June of 18, they, uh, there was a total of 4,000, excuse me, 4 million, 4.9 million adverse events that are recorded. Over a billion people awakened to the lies of the Pharma. And there's a video there too, if you can let yourself see those facts and figures. CDC chief knew COVID vaccine didn't work while pushing shots, and so did Tony Foshee. And just think, how much COVID shot was promoted here in Fairfield County, even though it was revealing, uh, even though I was revealing false things about, about, and two years ago. And what did you say, Steve?
Please conclude your remarks.
Scientists, okay, the scope of harms for the last few years has been vast, intricate, almost infantile, and with many parts, many actors similar to harms perpetrated by the UN troops around the world to harm and, um, to harms penetrated by the Catholic Church and other churches and must be admitted and dealt with. Scientists suspected Wauhong land leak in COVID-19, and the paper titled Proximal Origin, pushed by, pushed on March 17th of 20, was wildly successful to shut down the discussion. But the coming congressional hearing on cover-up refers to the scheme put into place by a small group of scientists at the request of US government officials to squash any public discussion.
Time is concluded. Anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? We thank you all for coming. Anybody else who'd like to address the commission? Thank you all very much. Update on legal.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to let the board know the budget bill passed that was signed by Governor Dwyane on July 1st. Stephen and I have been reviewing it, and this is not to be a comprehensive changes that would positively impact the county, but a few highlights I did want to note. Competitive bidding statute under 30786 was updated, um, effective September 30th, 2023 and through calendar year 2024. The new bidding threshold limit is, has been increased from 50,000 to 75,000.
May I ask you to bring your voice up a little bit? When the air conditioning is on, I think the people who are joining us online might be having trouble hearing.
So it's been increased from 50,000 to 75,000, which is great news. And from here on out, there's now going to be an escalation provision. A whole new statute was created for the Department of Commerce to do a 3% increase starting calendar year 2025, which will be like prevailing wage. You can go to the Department of Commerce website to see what the new competitive bidding threshold will be every year after 2024. So that's, I know, welcome news for facilities and different folks that have good things. Um, the commissioners' emergency powers, if there's an emergency, it wasn't capped at 100,000, that's been increased to 125,000 moving forward. Uh, the county credit card statute was revised to take away those delineated categories. Essentially, the commissioners will need a policy, which you already have, I'm pretty sure, coming forward, and just be clients of that policy about how to proper automate statements to the county auditor, insurance for a proper public purpose. So we'll have to probably do a review of the current county policy. Finally, under for public improvements, um, if a bid is received in excess, the old law was if a bid had to be within 10% of the cost estimate in order to be valid, that limit has now been increased to 20%. So that gives some relief to facilities and different public improvements. So just wanted to share those highlights with you all, and Stephen and I will continue reviewing this as time goes on.
Thank you. And on the state budget, I know myself and my colleagues may have some, some comments on that as the meeting continues, but thank you very much for your update. Administration update.
And on that note, contracting, we appreciate Amy and Stephen's help on that all the time, um, reviewing them in advance and helping us get to that final language. So thank you, guys. American Rescue Plan update from the 30.6 received. We have 25.1 appropriated. We have a couple of resolutions on today that will appropriate additional funds. 14.1 expended, 4.9 encumbered or obligated, and those numbers are updated as of July 6th. The June 30th ARP report is also included in the review packet. Continuing on the state budget conversation there, uh, we were very fortunate to receive specific funding for the workforce center in the amount of 4.5 million. This will allow for building improvements, program costs and program equipment. The commissioners represented by Ray, Senator Schaefer, and Governor Dwyane were all very helpful in making sure this crossed the finish line for us. It was a, a little bit of gnashing of teeth at the end, so to speak, but I think it ended up in a good place for everyone there. Did have a conversation, uh, with the chancellor of higher education last week regarding his enthusiasm for it and willingness to get those funds to us as quickly as possible, and we'll be doing an MOU, which would be very broad because the funds weren't, um, there's not a lot of strings attached to how we're expending these funds. And I know we also had an opportunity to speak with Dave as well. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Commissioner?
Oh, I had a very good conversation with the chancellor, and he's very supportive of the work we're doing. Matter of fact, he's almost a proponent of it, and, uh, but, uh, it's, it's all good, and he's, uh, he's going to try to have those funds to us within the next two or three weeks, which I think is even better than H.
Yep. And John and Rick have been working to be prepared for that positive outcome, to get some things going there for the engineering tech program, as well as some building, overall building improvements that we do need to make. So thanks, John, for your work on that. Uh, continuing on with the budget, um, the local government fund was increased from 1.66 to 1.7, um, at face value. That will probably end up being a reduction overall, given some of the, um, other impacts of the budget, and probably won't feel the impact of, of that until later in 2024. We also received a memo from the Ohio Public Defender's Office regarding, uh, projected indigent defense reimbursement rates for fiscal year 24. That's projected right now at 85%. Um, they're going to closely monitor that, um, and give us periodic updates, see if it could be increased or decreased, and I think all of us up here anticipate that being a decrease of that reimbursement rate. Uh, there are two task force that, um, are being implemented to examine present funding and structure of indigent, indigent defense in Ohio. So, uh, we'll look forward to see what those recommendations might bring. Uh, but there is a cap now in place of $75 an hour for reimbursement, and that limit does apply to all cases, including capital cases. The rate for capital cases is set at 140, so we would be responsible for that difference from 75 to 140. Uh, the judge in the case can still allow for extraordinary fees where necessary, um, could, could exceed the cap overall for a particular case. So, um, not really any new or positive news on that front, other that, um, others will be held to that $75 max.
Can I touch on that for a minute? I just want to invite my colleagues to comment. I've been going through a fair amount of discussion with the Bar Association, but one time had a committee that was dealing with their position on this issue. We're at $65 an hour right now. Our second increase, uh, in recent years took effect January 1st. I understand the cap's at 75. I also understand that as we feared when we entered these discussions a few years ago, the projected reimbursement rate has never turned out to be accurate. Um, and I suspect that the new projected reimbursement rate of 85% will also turn out to be inaccurate. From my vantage point, I'm done for the foreseeable future dealing with this issue. If you guys feel differently, you can tell me now.
If I may?
Yep.
So, speaking generally, uh, micro level Fairfield County, um, our state representative, Jeff LaRae, our state senator, Tim Schaefer, um, state representative Kevin Miller did a fantastic job of helping two big, um, issues here in Fairfield County, our workforce development we've already talked about. They also got a decent amount of money for the Fairfield Medical Center, which, um, is critical, uh, for their continued well-being, and, and we know how important Fairfield Medical Center is to Fairfield County and really a good chunk of Southeast Ohio. Uh, on a macro level, um, the choice to, um, fund the 911 at, um, I think it's 34 cents instead of 64 cents, I think was, uh, I don't understand why the state government doesn't feel like emergency services are critical. Um, the, um, local government fund, um, you know, for them to, for the state government to make what ends up to be a negative impact on our local budgets at the county level, villages, cities, and, and townships, I don't understand that. Um, and indigent defense, uh, I'm not going to give up on it. Uh, it is tremendously frustrating that, um, they continue to kick the can down the road, and we end up paying for it. So, um, while they were very good to us locally, to counties in general, um, they were not helpful, and that's disappointing.
Commissioner, if I might, I'm not, when I say I'm done with it, I'm not talking about being done with the state in terms of reimbursement rate. I'm talking about being done raising our rates.
Oh, yeah. I don't disagree with that.
Mr. Let us see anything further on state budget.
Well, other than, uh, the indigent, uh, defense fund, you know, we, we all know when, uh, the state said you, that you need to raise attorney rates and so on and so forth, a lot, a lot of counties took that literally and raised the rates dramatically. Uh, they probably had enough funding to provide the necessary funds throughout the state, but when they opened that doors, and, uh, obviously, people do what they do, and they increased a lot of rates, made it, uh, made it unaffordable, and it affected us dramatically. And, uh, I think that was the root cause of the whole thing. Uh, as far as, uh, as far as state, uh, state budgets, uh, you know, I have to, I have to give, uh, for state legislature, you know, and I know we, we have other issues that, uh, weren't treated very well, but, uh, here in Fairfield County, we, we were treated very well, uh, with those exceptions, with four and a half, or a workforce center, four and a half for Fairfield Medical Center. Uh, there was, uh, funding for Fairfield locally, full for 400,000 to fix some budget issues. There's 1.8 given to United Way, about six different regions. So our United Way was received pretty good chunk. There was, uh, 425,000 for Bycott Lake Region Corporation, and then, uh, also 500 million was provided, uh, Connect Four, Ohio, and hopefully the funds will be provided out of that to do the Taylor Road interchange. And, uh, so, uh, Representative Ray and, and Senator Schaefer, I think they did great work, in particular, uh, Jeff LaRae, because he was on reconciliation group that did all the final things between the Senate and the House. So I'm, I'm pretty happy with everything, with the exceptions that, uh, Commissioner Fix had mentioned.
Thank you, Commissioner. Back to administrative update.
All right. Highlights of resolutions. The review packet contains a list of administrative approvals, and there are 35 resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting. Couple of note I will point out, we have three resolutions to authorize the use of American Rescue Plan fiscal recovery funds, one for a subgrant to provide emergency assistance to Adam H. to address homelessness and to provide support for behavioral health challenges due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Second one is for county health benefits related to COVID-19 healthcare expenses. And lastly, uh, the third is for a purchase of radios for the engineers' office. We also have a resolution to approve the continuation of an enterprise zone agreement between blue label packaging, Fairfield County Commissioners and the City of Lancaster. This is an outcome of the recent tax incentive review committee meeting. We also have a resolution nominating members of the Fairfield County Local Emergency Planning Committee to the State Emergency Response Commission. Anything on that, John?
Just to normal to your process.
Okay. And then we have a resolution to adopt the stormwater design manual. This was presented at the June 27th public hearing, and if passed, will be effective August 11th. Also have another resolution from the engineers' office. They are, um, cooperating agreement with the director of Ohio Department of Transportation regarding roundabout maintenance, uh, those roundabouts on 22. Jeremiah, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, just basically, ODOT reached out to my office and, and asked me to correspond with the commissioners on, uh, on what the limits of, of maintenance responsibility are going to be for the roundabouts, because they're, you know, obviously, it's not a straight road, it's not a simple, it's just a 60 or 70 or 80-foot right away, and it stops there. So we worked with, with ODOT to establish what we felt like were the correct boundaries on that, and what you're seeing is a resolution to leave that responsibility.
And if I might, just so we're clear, this is the state's decision regarding the establishment of the roundabout resolution that we're dealing with is just responsibility for maintenance. Is that fair?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Uh, we have a resolution approving an agreement with Roof Connect to replace roofs on the Ag Center, Real Estate Office, Liberty Center, um, the payment drive-through at 135 West Chestnut, and Two-Sing Road Government Services Center, and also a paving contract. So appreciate, John. Um, I think we throw a little Dennis's way of being helpful here.
Absolutely.
So just not beating up on anybody here, but curious, same roof company that did the roof over my office?
Hey, yeah, certainly.
Okay.
Talk more about it.
Just checking.
You mean your new office?
Don't.
And lastly, a resolution of, uh, authorizing the approval of a service agreement with Verdantis. This is for engineering services related to the Pleasantville CDBG projects. Bart, any budget review?
Updates.
All right. Thank you. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
All right. We have a memo from the Office of the Public Defender dated July 7th regarding the indigent defense reimbursement, a letter, a letter from the Ohio History Connection regarding the John Leest House at 10200 Cincinnati Danesville Road in Amanda, and the National Register of Historic Places of the National Park Service. A press release from the Office of the County Auditor dated July 3rd titled Auditor's Office Announces Tax Incentive Review Council Meetings Completed for 2023. A press release from the Auditor's Office dated July 5th titled County Auditor's Map of the Month Features LIDAR GIS Working on Public Safety Project. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown, County Auditor, dated June 29th, subjects assessed valuation and estimated true value of taxable property, LIDAR view of Mount Pleasant, map of the month, and thanks to Senator Schaefer and Representative LaRae. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown dated July, July 5th, subjects general fund budget update, principal taxpayers, real estate tax, and strategic plan update. and Strategic Plan Update. A newsletter, oh, I'm sorry, recognitions from County Auditor. We've got a list of those that are provided in the packet. Uh, a newsletter from the County Auditor's Office titled Auditor's Ledger, news from the County Auditor's Office, and that is for July. The Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, twenty-twenty-two Annual Report, the Economic Development Strategic Plan and Update to the twenty-eighteen Comprehensive Plan. Fairfield Thirty-three Alliance Overview Report, June seventh, twenty-twenty-three. A newsletter titled MCJDC News Creating Inclusive Vision to Vision Experiences, and that is also for July. From the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office, the Township Letter, Litter Report from June, and this is from Deputy Gary Hummel. Letters from Fairfield County Residents Regarding Solar Projects. And the City of Lancaster's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
And then Rochelle, I think we, uh, skipped calendar review invitations received. Uh, save the date for the map.
I did. I am so sorry.
No problem.
Um, we have a save the date, the MAP Forward Project Neuroscience for Hopeful Futures in Fairfield County Training, September twentieth from nine to five. And that is at the Fairfield County Agricultural Center. And Intel on Intel and More, this is on August twenty-third at eleven-thirty at the Canal Winchester Community Center and Canal Winchester.
Who's, who's the, uh, author of the invitation on Intel for Intel? Can you tell that?
It is in the packet.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. That's, thank you very much, Rochelle. Under old business, I have none. Commissioner Fix, under old business?
None, but thank you for letting me go first.
Oh, sure. Oh, I got you, man. Commissioner Levacy, under old business?
Other than, uh, you know, uh, last week we celebrated July four independence and I hope everybody had a safe and a wonderful time. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to view any of the fireworks because my dog is so afraid of fireworks that I have to stay in the basement with it.
That's very kind of you to make that sacrifice. Thank you. Under new business, I have none. Commissioner Levacy, under new business? Commissioner Fix, under new business?
Yeah. So we have, uh, the One Ohio Recovery Foundation, um, board meeting tomorrow. And, uh, that, uh, group is finally in a position to make a recommendation of three names to the governor for, uh, to lead the, uh, foundation as executive director. Um, so we're making some progress there, though progress remains slow.
Thank you. We are, uh, thrilled to have, uh, a number of, uh, our elected officials with us this morning. And first, uh, Mr. Bonson, anything you'd like to share?
Well, you start that side and go this way.
I'm a right and left kind of guy.
Okay. Uh, good morning. Uh, my office stays very busy right now. Uh, as you know, the due date for taxes is, uh, July twentieth, a week from this coming Thursday. Any questions? It's the time to stop down at the office and ask them to get anything resolved. Uh, another, uh, fourth of July, uh, I had mentioned earlier about, uh, our committee that we put on the fireworks in Lancaster. Uh, it was very successful this year. Uh, we closed the parking lot at eight-thirty, which is unheard of. We filled the parking lot, so that was good. So it appears that we've covered all of our expenses, so it was a good year. We appreciate everyone being out. Thank you.
If I could ask a question, if I might?
Yes.
Um, I know the IAC is meeting next week, the Investment Advisory Committee. Um, been kind of watching the rates over the recent weeks. Uh, appears to be positive from the IAC standpoint. Any sneak peek on what you might share with us next week?
Uh, um, you're right. No, the rates have been relatively robust right now. In fact, we, I looked at one, uh, investment and it was actually, interest-wise was the traditional way, the further you went out, the higher it was. So five point three percent out at five years, so that was a good investment. We took the money for the, uh, the loan for the airport. Just put that in six-month treasury bills at five point five percent. So, uh, right now, what money is available for investments? We're moving it out as far as possible. Um, right now with the collections, obviously we've got a lot of money going to Star Ohio right now, which continues to stay at, you probably know, five point two seven percent. So, I think things looking good right now.
Appreciate the heads up on that stuff and thank you for being with us today. We have County Clerk Brandon Meyer. How are you today?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. Anything on your mind?
Uh, we're going through a training and testing of our case management system conversion. Going very well, so we're, we're excited. Uh, the go-live date is scheduled for August fourteenth. So Corview's been here, I think, four times already. They're coming back in a couple of weeks, um, spent four days with us. So we're excited, fingers crossed that everything goes smoothly.
Thanks for being here. It's McKenzie County Clerk reporting. I do. Funny thing is it says it right in the fiber. If I could see that far, then I would read it.
Um, we just are working with, um, our vendor Fiddler. We have updated our property fraud alert system to offer some new opportunities for folks to be able to sign up to get text messaging. Uh, there's a QR code now and they're also offering that in English and Spanish. So, um, that's a good, um, effort to help get folks signed up for that property fraud alert and, uh, help protect their most valuable investment.
I'm curious if Commissioner Fix knows what QR stands for?
No.
See, I know what the QR code is. Do you? I just learned this past week, so I'm excited about it.
And you wanted to make me an example?
So please enlighten us.
Quick response.
Thank you. I just wanted to embarrass him a little bit.
Didn't work.
We're kind of anticipating and waiting because we don't know either.
Oh, I just said.
Quick response.
That was not a quick response.
We have Jeremiah, our county engineer. How you doing, bud?
I'm doing good. Mr. Davis.
Anything you'd like to share?
Uh, I'll try to keep it brief. We have a, a lot going on this time of year at the County Engineers Office. We are, uh, in, in the middle of a couple of different ri- bridge replacements. Um, we are getting ready to start our resurfacing program, which is everything from chip and seal to blacktop pavement. Uh, we're doing a lot of road repairs and whatnot in, in preparation for that, replacing culverts out in front of it, so on and so forth. Um, there's a lot of things going on with the Ohio Department of Transportation. We've been working with them on from the Pickerton Interchange to the Taylor Road, um, at I seventy. We're getting a lot of good news out of that. That project got funded. Um, so we should see that sometime here in the, uh, if you can call five, six, seven years near future. It seems to be with funding realms anymore, but there, there's just a whole spectrum of things going on. The one thing that I want to point out right now, um, just for everybody, just to, just to put it in the back of their head. Um, we had a contractor that is working on one of our jobs that while on another job had an employee get killed. And there was, um, there could have been, trying to be careful how I say this, but there could have been more, uh, done as far as safety goes with that. So we have ramped up our safety training, reinforced all of our employees that, uh, you know, that's the first thing, that's number one, that's the most important thing. We're not cutting corners, uh, taking a chance with anybody's life. So, um, it, it kind of home to somebody I know. So I just wanted to bring that up. Hopefully anybody else that's in a situation where, you know, safety is important, thinks about that, was the right thing. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Brown?
We have a new process for the electronic approval of legal descriptions. And that coupled with the opinion received, thank you, relating to the descriptions for condominiums has really made that process altogether more efficient. Um, so we're excited about both the opinion and the new process. Um, relating to the budget bill, I mentioned a couple of things that are very specific to the auditor's office. Um, we are very pleased that the homestead program has been indexed for inflation. That is something that we were asking, it could have gone a little bit more, but being indexed for inflation is helpful. So that increases the opportunities within that program. In addition, the valuation of properties remains the same. It is still the fair market value as of the taxing date. And a little statistic that might be interesting is that for the county overall, the estimated true value is fourteen billion and that's thirty-three point seven percent assessed valuation. So that is something that is an interesting statistic of great magnitude that gives relevance as you think about the pieces and parts that make that fourteen billion. We also have the inclusion of free registrations for dog licenses for those that are assistance dogs, no matter where the assistance dog is trained. And there are some adjustments to tax increment financing, which will affect new tips. And the auditor of state is going to produce a training for fraud reporting. It'll be similar to the sunshine law training. Um, so you'll hear more about that. We already have an internal control manual and discussions about the things that will be part of that training. But it'll be a required training, very similar to the sunshine law training, follow that pattern.
Question, if I might, Dr. Brown, one number you just mentioned, um, I think you said thirty-three point seven percent.
Assessed valuation, yes.
Yeah. Is that new? Cause I'm, for some reason I was under the impression it was thirty-five.
It is for residential property. This is for the whole of everything, a landed percentage, if you will.
Okay. I understand now. Thank you.
It's, it's an interesting statistic so you can think about the wholeness of it. It includes utilities and commercial.
Interesting.
And then the budget commission will need to meet regarding an alternate formula once every five years. That's new and across that bridge as we need to. Uh, one other thing, though, the principal taxpayers, um, interesting statistic there. And this is something that shows the health of the Fairfield County economy. There is not one taxpayer that represents more than point one eight percent of assessed valuation. So that it's a broad base. So that statistic is something that's very helpful in describing the health of the Fairfield County tax base itself. On September twenty-first, we're going to have a real estate summit. We're going to call it serving those who have served based upon questions we received for the veteran population. We're looking forward to that. We'll give you more details, but we'll give you, um, a heads up about that. It'll be about a three-hour summit. We're going to hold it at the Fairgrounds.
Well, thank you very much. And on behalf of the commission, I want to say thank you to all of our elected officials who are with us today. Uh, we continue to appreciate it when you do have the opportunity to join us and share with us what's going on in your respective offices. Is there any other ish item that anybody'd like to bring to the attention of the commission at this time? Here you are, and we move to our voting time. He did it. Trolley didn't care. Just shut the fuck. You would please rise if you're able, join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation under God. Glory to God. Thank you. John, do we have any announcements?
We do not.
Move on to the approval minutes for June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Captain? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes passed three zero. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution twenty-two-three dash seven dot eleven dot A. A resolution authorizing a fund-to-fund transfer for the third quarter twenty-twenty-three allocation for the multi-county juvenile detention center.
Under Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I. Second.
Captain? Call the roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, Resolution twenty-two-three dash seven dot eleven dot J. A resolution authorizing approving a contract for services by and between the Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas and the Fairfield County Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Board for mental health services provided by New Horizons at the Fairfield County Jail.
So moved. Second.
Captain?
Brian Wolfe is here from Common Pleas.
Uh, just a continuation of the government health service provided in the jail by our agency.
So it's always good to see you, sir. Thank you for being with us. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development. Res- Resolution twenty-two-three dash seven dot eleven dot K. A resolution to approve the continuation of an enterprise zone agreement between Blue Label Packaging, the Fairfield County Commissioners and the City of Lancaster.
So moved. Second.
Captain? Just say a high word about Blue Label. Just a young, growing company in our community. Uh, I think their employment is pushing about a hundred and forty folks right now. Uh, they have, uh, some pretty significant expansion plans, uh, laid out for their future. And, uh, I'm just, uh, excited for that. Particularly a company among many that are, that are growing in our county right now. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. For Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution twenty-two-three dash seven dot eleven dot L. A resolution in the matter of nominations to the Fairfield County Local Emergency Planning Committee.
So moved. Second.
Captain?
Thank you for your participation. We'll see you at the next meeting.
At the meeting? Can I be here?
Absolutely.
All right. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution twenty-two-three dash seven dot eleven dot M. A resolution to approve and adopt the Fairfield County Ohio Stormwater Design Manual, version one point zero, August twenty-twenty-three.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move items M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, and U.
Second.
Captain?
So we're, we're doing that resolution now. The second hearing for that is at eleven o'clock today.
We need to find an appointment. We had the last hearing, there was some discussion regarding the necessity or lack thereof, a second hearing, so to speak. Uh, we had, um, I was going to say no attendance at the first hearing, but let me, let's say, cause I think John Coe just spoke in favor of the design manual. But, uh, I think we're good on that.
All right. Well, I apologize for that. I was on vacation during the first hearing and, uh, I came in here prepared to do a second one. Off the hook.
Good. Further discussion?
I do have a question for the engineer. Uh, Coon Path, you have portion of that closed for the bridge replacement. Do you intend on paving that from thirty-seven to Election House, maybe?
Yes, those are the limits, thirty-seven to Election House. I want to make sure before I spoke, yes, it will be repaved after the bridge is replaced and we get, um, the multitude of full debt repairs we need to do on the section between one fifty-eight and straight down.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution twenty-two-three dash seven dot eleven dot V. A resolution authorizing approval of an agreement for the replacement of roofs with Roof Connect.
Under Fairfield County Facilities, I move items V and W. Second.
Discussion?
Question, I, it's just novel that this is our first time using cooperative purchasing, um, with construction projects, which are a new, interesting way to do things. We're really excited to get all these done.
I don't have questions specifically on pending resolutions, but I wondered if you might take this opportunity to give the commission an update on the solar field adjacent to the one stop.
Sure. Uh, obviously the panels are installed, um, they're what they call racked. Uh, what we're waiting on now is the engineering and, um, What we're waiting on now is the engineering and interconnection with our local vendor, Fleetwood Electric. EcoSolar is our vendor subcontractor for the actual solar piece, and they have been extremely delayed on their engineering. And obviously, the multitude of solar projects may be in the country may be wrong to that, but we're just waiting on that interconnection and then the process again to connect to the grid, so to speak, with South Central. And hopefully that those two pieces will go smoothly. We anticipate that the first or second week of August, we'd be on one.
And so just on behalf of the Commission, I don't want to say that we've reached our highest level of frustration because I think there's still another level for us to go.
Interestingly enough, we started in August of 2021, so
I understand.
Round that off at a nice couple of years.
It's a little hard to escalate. There are circumstances or situations where escalations would be helpful.
We're all, our foot is on the gas, or just at a couple of different versions here.
Further discussion?
Bad cop, bad cop.
Yeah. Commissioner Fix is suggesting we implement a bad cop, bad cop. Further discussion?
Please go ahead.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Family, Adult and Children First Council, Resolution 2023-7 dot 11 dot X, a resolution authorizing the approval of partial repayment of an advance to the general fund from fund number 7521.
Summated, second.
Discussion.
Please go ahead.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2023-7 dot 11 dot Y, a resolution authorizing the approval of a service agreement by Verdantis LLC and Board of County Commissioners.
Summated, second.
Discussion.
Please go ahead.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2023-7 dot 11 dot Z, a resolution authorizing the approval of a service agreement by and between Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and the Fairfield Union School District.
The Fairfield County Sheriff, I move items Z, A, A, B, B, C, C, D, D, and E, E.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Utilities Department, Resolution 2023-7 dot 11 dot FF, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category and fund to fund transfer, Utilities Fund 5853, Diley Wellfield.
Summated, second.
Scott, if you might unmute Tony Vogel if he's muted.
Second. Tony, are you able to hear us? And unmute? Tony, are you able to hear us?
That's fine, we can proceed. Further discussion?
Are you able to unmute?
Yes, sorry. Sorry, I didn't know I had control. These funds are for property purchase, which we'll have an agreement next week on. That's what these are set up for.
And Tony, if you might just touch on the plan there?
Yeah, this is at the, at the Diley Farm. We purchased the Wellfield in 2019. And this is, we had first written refusal on this property, and it is the actual 18 acres left on the farm, which will eventually be a nice location for a new water treatment facility.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you for being with us. Further discussion?
Please go ahead.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Agency, Resolution 2023-7 dot 11 dot GG, a resolution authorizing the approval of the mortgage on the Program Year 2021 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, rehab construction for Robert Wortman.
Under Lancaster Fairfield County Community Action Agency, I move items GG and HH.
Second.
Discussion. Go ahead.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. On payment of bills, Resolution 2023-7 dot 11 dot II, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Summated.
Second. Discussion.
Please go ahead.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for July 18th at 9:00 AM in this room.
Ten meeting at 1:00 PM among us is expecting to be there.
I'll be there.
So it's peppered. Is there any other issue item that anybody'd like to bring the attention of the Commission at this time? Here you go, I'll tell the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn in a second. I was embarrassed to say that. I, 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 both saying son, the motion carries, and the Commission has adjourned, and we thank you all for coming.